Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation, under God, in his will, liberty and justice for all.
Role?
Graham Cassoon?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
John Francois?
Here.
Summers?
Here.
Witt?
Here.
Kleiner?
Here.
Burr?
Here.
Massey?
Here.
President Rodriguez?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes?
We have the minutes from the common council meeting from April 5th, 2016.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence?
Okay, we have a, from the state liquor authority, a new application for Equilibrium Grill, Inc., at 22 Henry Street.
Forward to the police department?
We have another one from the state liquor authority for a new applications for a liquor license from CNY Restaurant, Inc., at 21 West Main Street.
Forward to the police department?
And we have a request from the Inventor Crusade at 125 to 133 North Street. They want to do a tent in the parking lot at 125 to 133 North Street for an outdoor crusade.
Forward to Public Works Committee?
That is all four correspondents.
Okay, for the good of the city, anyone who would like to address this council, please step forward.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Catherine McMenamy and I live at 19 Willow Place. And I have three issues that I'd like to bring up tonight for your consideration. One is the railroad that runs behind Willow Place has been transporting tanker cars. And a couple of weeks ago, we had it go by at seven o'clock at night on a Sunday evening. My concern is, does anyone know, or is there any way of finding out what is in those tanker cars? Because they go right through residential area. My second concern is regarding the canals that are on both sides of those railroad tracks. The side that is on the Willow Place side, that water does not flow, it does not run, it is stagnant water. Eventually, warm weather will get here, and then we are going to be bothered by mosquitoes and the like. And with all the diseases that mosquitoes are carrying these days, it's, you know, what can be done about that? And is it something that perhaps the health department needs to become involved with? I don't know. It's a question. My third issue is that we in the fourth ward used to have fourth ward meetings once a month. We now don't have them as often, and there are several people who would be in favor of having them once a month. We feel connected having it once a month. It gives us the opportunity to bring up situations or questions in a quieter, smaller atmosphere. And I was wondering if perhaps it could be considered, reconsidered, as far as rescheduling our monthly meetings. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Susan DePue, 57 Prospect Street, and I'm the chairperson of the Middletown Pride Committee. I would like to report on the amazing success we had with our pride committee cleanup of Middletown on April 23rd. First of all, I don't really know where to begin, and I hope I name all the people that really gave us 150 percent. But I'd like to begin with the mayor and the council. And I'd like to thank all of you for everything that you've done to make this idea become a reality. We're six years in running, and I can't thank you enough for supporting me. The entire council came in one way or another. Although I was the designated mayor of the morning to sign the 150...
Pretty smart, right?
Right.[293.12][293.12](laughing) The 150 or more, I can't think, community service awards for the kids that came up to me. It was overwhelming to see their enthusiasm in being recognized for doing something that they were going to do anyway. And that really brought very, it brought a write to me, to see the kids involved. I'd like to thank the parks and rec department, particularly Chris. I'd like to thank Jacob and for all the people that helped us in any way. I'd like to thank the bid, because without Maria and John, it would never have happened. And I really want to thank my friend John Numchak for all the things that he does behind the scenes when emails don't go through to me and things like that. He still makes it happen. We got the youth involved in ways that I only imagined six years ago that we could. We had 500 or more people, and most of them were people under 20. That says a lot about where we're going in this city. We have the kids involved, and when you see those kids in bright yellow-green shirts and people say, "You're doing the right thing," then I know that we're doing the right thing. And I'm not going to live up here on this podium forever, but as I said, I'm going to keep coming until it's clean. And we're almost there, I think. When I see the changes that happened in Middletown, it brings joy to me to say that I live here. And I thank everybody here for bringing those changes to Middletown. We're changing, and we're going to make Middletown the gold standard of New York State. And from here, I have an idea to go farther, but I'm going to make sure this gets better before I leave here. So I want to thank everybody for giving all the things that you gave to Middletown that day, and I am proud to be a Middletown resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council?
Good evening, all. Mayor Winter, 121 Lake Avenue. Before I start on my issue, I'd like to add information to the lady who's concerned about the tanker cars. If there is a hazardous material, it has to be placarded, all four sides, with the UN number, and you can look that up on what it is from. It's a four-digit number. The color tells you the type of hazard, and the number tells you the specific hazard. What I believe is really going on here is the M and N J are rehabbing those cars. They buy the used cars, they bring them back up, and then resell them. I believe that's what's happening, but I don't know that for sure. For my issue, I'm making one of my periodic requests for volunteers for the Middletown Fire Department. For people who don't know, we've been organized as volunteers since 1859. We have seven companies and a fire police unit. Five of those are engines, two are ladders, and, as I said, the fire police. We're a combination department. That means we have paid drivers, but we depend heavily on volunteers. Guys like myself have aged out, so we have to have younger people do what I used to. The value to the city is considerable. I haven't done the numbers, but the last time I did, it was something like a savings of five to seven million dollars annually, because we're volunteers. That was a long time. That was maybe eight or 10 years ago. So I haven't, I would have to crunch the numbers to get a fresh number on that. Who can be a volunteer? One simple criteria: you have to be over 16. 16 and 17 are junior firefighters. You can be as involved as you want, and the payback you get is proportional to your effort. The benefits to a new volunteer: you're helping others in their extreme need. You get to network with other firefighters. We have essentially every occupation you can think of as volunteers in the fire department. You get safety training. You might look at a fire scene and think it's chaos, but it's organized chaos, and nobody does stuff on their own. They all work under the incident command system. So you learn skills that are portable to your workplace. If you're interested in finding out more, or you want to volunteer for one of our seven companies at the fire police, the chief's office number is 344-5003, and the recruiting chair is 467-1420. And you'll be seeing us doing work with details at the various seasonal outdoor activities around the city during the warm months. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Anyone else who would like to address the council? Come on up.
Again, Susan DePue from the pride committee. Without all the help from the community, we could not have done what we did. And I really apologize, I didn't say this first. First of all, I'd like to thank Middletown Cares for their extremely generous donation to us. They paid for all the shirts, which amounted to be almost $4,000. I'd like to thank the people, and I'm just going to quickly name, who collectively gave us over $4,000. Appleby Phillips Funeral Home, Steve Dodd, Hand in Hand Care, Alice Krajcek, Sossler's Garden, H.T. Dunn Incorporated, Tony Boffa Restaurant, Mid-City Transit, Omega Title Services, Royal Pools and Spas, Benedict Magmurials, LLC, Wayne Hawkins, Taylor from Montgomery, Royal Pools Construction, Gentle Dentistry, Fusco Engineering and Land Surveying, Arts Drive-In Cleaners, and Middletown Professional Firefighters. Thank you from the bottom of all of our hearts. Without it, we could not have done this, and I apologize, I didn't say that, I just closed my book too soon. Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, reports of department heads, economic development?
Nothing this evening, unless anybody has any questions?
Any question for Maria? City assessor?
Nothing this evening, unless anybody has any questions?
Any question for the assessor? Thank you.
Good evening. There's a public hearing on this evening about possibly changing some of the zoning in the C, the uses allowable in the C-3A zone. This was at my request of the council to have the public hearing. When we're looking at the zone, which is designed to cover the old Middletown Psychiatric Center grounds, and seeing the direction in which it's developing, which is more university-college type setting, it appears that some of those uses are not appropriate for that type of zoning district. So that's the purpose of the public hearing, to hear any public comments. If there are none, or if there are comments favorable to it, then the next step would be, I would propose drafting a resolution to change the zoning to reflect what the public hearing is about. So I just wanted to speak on that, let you know that, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any question for Rich? Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Treasure?
Nothing this evening, unless anybody has any questions?
Any question for Treasure? Thank you, Don.
Good evening, all. Start off, we finished our spring cleanup month for the city, and the city, all the junk was picked up and disposed of. We appreciate the residents' help in not putting any TVs or any electronic equipment, and we just want to remind you that May 21st, on Saturday, we're gonna, the mayor and the common council has designated that day for a drop-off day for your electronics. So if you have a TV, computer, printer, fax machine, any kind of monitors, please drop them off at our DPW Recycling Garage on 76 Monhegan Avenue. This service will be free of charge, and the city will get rid of these electronics. Again, we appreciate your help in not putting TVs that much on the sidewalks. Your help is much, much appreciated. Reminder, you cannot dispose of prescription drugs, or any oil paint, or anything like that, and regular garbage, or to flush it down the toilet, because Orange County just had their collection, free collection of drug, prescription drug, and oil-based paint and so on, and some hazardous material last weekend, and they will continue to do that in the future. So if you have anything you want to dispose of, please hold on to it until such an advertisement. And I think the police department mayor will be doing something about, the mayor will address that. Another thing is on the water flushing of our water distribution system. Now we're up to the first ward, and hopefully in two weeks, we will finish the first ward. And that will be the end of the annual flushing for our water system. On Thursday, we're going to have a bid opening Thursday, about 4:30 bid opening for Sterling Street Sewer Phase Two, which is an important project for us to minimize our inflow and infiltration. We're looking forward to constructing, to the construction of that project, and continuing the upgrade of our infrastructure. Again, yard waste, we're picking that up. We started, and all you have to do, just put it out in containers Sunday evening, and we'll pick it up throughout the week. But Sunday evening, you should put it out, please, for any yard waste, grass clippings and all that. Before you, tonight, you will have some bids that we are recommending, their awards for annual plumbing, electric, HVAC services for the city by different contractors. And last month in April, our wastewater treatment plan generated revenue of $44,685 from septic haulers from outside the city. Do you have any questions for me?
Any question for the commissioner? Thank you, commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
John?
Just for the record, that last month, the council voted to move the common council meeting that was supposed to be on Tuesday, the 17th, to Thursday. Now, the 19th will be the common council meeting, just for the public, and we will put that on the website, and it is on the city calendar. Also, too, we will be, now the warm weather's coming, the yard sale are starting to come up, and please, you need a permit for a yard sale. Anybody needs one, please come to the city clerk's office. Also, to the warm weather coming, the events in the city are starting to happen, and some of these streets will be closing for these events. And on our website, on the homepage, there is an icon for street closings for special events, and I've been updating on that, because the Memorial Day Parade will be coming up, the Ruthie Dino Run, and also the 10 Classic, 10K Classic Race. So please check those on the website for any street closings. That's all I have.
Any question for John?
I got two. Going back to the railroad tankers, the cars, do we know if they're empty?
No, it's not.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, mayor.
We check with the railroad every year when they start storing on there. We've been assured in the past that they have not been, they have been empty, and that they would not store any type of railcar there. We will verify again with them this year regarding the, what's in the tankers. And I don't know if you know where, maybe a few of you remember, we did try to attempt to look a few years ago ourselves, and they threatened our inspectors with arrest. And I think there was an elected official involved in that also. Not me.
You can pay him money.
I think he's sitting on the elevated stand, that they threatened to arrest if we go on their property. So we worked out this agreement where they would give us verification each year, or if they notify us if they were going to move something in. I doubt very highly with all the publicity that tanker storage is getting, and tank and movement, but we will verify that with them once again. The other issue was the water issue. I know the council president and I, we've been out there each year, we have made an arrangement with the railroad that we keep the drainage flowing. Jacob has it on his schedule to do in May, where we usually do a clearing out with our equipment, to keep the water flowing as best we can without, you know, having, you know, engineers in there with surveying and having heights. But we do clear out the debris, the overgrowth, and I believe Walk Hill last year did help us out a little bit downstream when you went towards Lake Reuben, and that was something we can contact Walk Hill again about this year. But those two things are on our normal maintenance list of annual things to look at as spring comes along. So we will verify it again.
Thank you. Okay, public hearings.
Tonight, we have a public hearing to amend zoning C-3A, limited business districts. I'll read the notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016, on or as near to 8:00 PM as possible, Common Council Chamber, Second Floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on a proposed amendment to the zoning code section 475-22, C-3A, limited general business district, to remove the following: uses allowed with planning board approval, large retail stores larger than 3,000 square feet, wholesale businesses establishments, hotels and motels, and service establishments for service other than a personal nature. A full copy of the proposed change of zoning code is available in the city clerk's office, room 12, City Hall, 16 James Street, Middletown, New York, and on the city website. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given an opportunity to speak either for or against a proposed amendment, and this is by order of the common council. And this was in the paper from John C. Numchak, clerk of the common council. It was published on April 25th, and April 26th, and on the city website.
This time, the public hearing is open? Anyone from the public? Anyone from the council?
Rich, I just got one question. Wholesale, would that prevent like a warehouse coming in there for wholesale?
That's one of the considerations, yeah.
Alderman Kleiner?
You asked my question, but I'm thinking back when we were thinking of it in terms more of a corporate park.
Right.
You had McCurry's Landscaping with a proposal, you had a Mexican bakery, which would have been more of a wholesale. I mean, the bakery part would have been there, and then they distribute from there. Would it prohibit that?
If we take that out, potentially it would, but again, we have to think, how do we, you know, what's the only supposed to reflect good planning, and what do we want for that? It seems to be more and more a campus-like atmosphere. And, you know, I think it was a year or so ago, the council changed, you know, the Woodman Hall, which was slated for senior housing. Now it's allowed for dormitory use for students. So it just seems the direction that it's going, I, my sense was that those uses were not as appropriate and should be removed, so that we can continue the development as it seems to be going. That's the thought.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to close the public hearing. Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Massey. Public hearing is now closed.
Good evening, and I want to begin with, you have a resolution in front of you this evening to reappoint Mr. Numchak to his position. Does anyone have any problem with that?
(laughing)
Well, I don't know. Ah, he's a good guy. Does a good job, and I'm sure they'll have unanimous support for it. But in regards to Sue in the pride committee, I want to thank all of those who participated in the cleanup, and, once again, a great job, and to give you a pat on the back, Sue, and you're going to be around for a lot longer than you think, I believe, because you really bounced back, your health has bounced back, so I don't know if you're trying to like shift away and apply that. No, no, you signed, you did my job on Saturday. You signed all those certificates, so, but to thank all those involved, and especially all the sponsors, and I'm also glad she identified all the sponsors for their support. I also had the opportunity to attend the inauguration of the new SUNY Orange president, Dr. Kristin Young, Christine Young, on Friday. It was a great event, and she's, you know, relatively young woman, and probably, I'd say in her 30s or 40s, probably late 30s, I'd say, with some really creative ideas for the SUNY Orange campuses, both here in Middletown and in Newburgh. And I think we're going to hear a lot of good things from her, and she's been, during her interim period here, before the inauguration, she's been very receptive, reaching out to community leaders and to business leaders in the community. And I think we're going to be seeing a lot of good things from her and from SUNY Orange in the very near future. And she's expressed her appreciation for the cooperation that she's received from local elected officials throughout the county, and feels very welcome here. She's originally from Scranton, Pennsylvania, and was out in Illinois for 17 or 18 years in that area. But it was a nice event, and very well received by the college community, the permanent status that she received. So I just wanted to congratulate her and congratulate SUNY Orange on a job well done. I also had the opportunity to attend the 50-year anniversary of St. Paul's Baptist Church on Cottage Street with Bishop Wright King and his congregation at Villa Venesia, and another great event, well-attended. And it doesn't seem like they've been in Middletown for 50 years, but they began on Whisner Avenue and moved over to Cottage Street, and, again, another very productive not-for-profit or church organization within the city. I will need an executive session on two matters tonight, one vice of council and one contract negotiations, if you can accommodate that. And I wanted to also touch on a resolution in front of you tonight about the annexation. I believe this is the final vote and the authorizations to complete the annexation of the Middletown Psychiatric Center property, and the dog park, and a portion of the property across the street from the dog park. It's going to be a very positive thing, as we can see, and one of the executive sessions, we'll be dealing with that issue, or an issue as a result of the annexation. So we're excited about the progress that's being made at MPC and our work with Maria and Jacob on the Empire State Development, and our consultant, and regarding the infrastructure and the possibility of the infrastructure grant. Maria didn't talk about it tonight, but I thought she may have touched on it before, is the competition for the $10 million grant for an urban center in the Hudson Valley region, and we think we're very competitive. And letters of intent need to go in by May 9th, around there, some, about a week. So we're going to be participating in that round of competition, and that's separate than the psychiatric center grant application that we have pending, which is the 11 million in infrastructure and the additional projects that we had planned at the psych center. We will be submitting under the new consolidated funding application round that just came out, I believe, sometime today. Jacob mentioned the drug collection issue, and the chief spoke with me briefly this week, and he's putting together a proposal for the council for consideration to have a permanent drop-off point within the police station for prescription drugs. And I think it's a good idea. It doesn't appear to be, you know, it's tough to keep, you know, oxycodone in your home for, you know, a year, or even several months, or outdated drugs before the county has the pickup. So the chief, what he's proposing to do, and I think it's through a, I don't know if it's through a company, but there is some lockbox type of equipment that can be used, and it would be in the police station lobby, but he'll be making a presentation at the next council meeting. I understand he was a little tired tonight, because he came back from a conference, and he was unable to make it. But he will give a better explanation at the May 17th, or May 19th meeting later this month. And let's see if I have everything on my list covered. I have just one final item, which is, yeah, two final items that are both related to garbage. The sanitation, as you know, King Street, we're investing a lot of money, most of it grant money, on the redevelopment of King Street. We have an interest in the Tompkins Building and the 11 King Building, and we have to move the garbage, or as we call it, the downtown landfill, every Sunday morning, because of the amount and the volume of garbage that's being created there, it's really out of control. So we are moving it to another location, not as convenient for business owners, but they'll have to suffer. It's down on the Canal Street Lot. You can see the pad is already in place, some of the piping has been put in for, try to keep it cleaner. The fencing will be going up, and we'll be doing notification. We are going to ask for a, and I believe I forwarded it to at least Jacob, I don't know if I forwarded it to the whole council, your consideration on some type of law that will restrict who can dump in these dumpsters. What we see is, we're getting a lot of people from outside the business district, and probably outside the city, that are dumping. They feel that, as you know, the township surrounding us, Walk Hill and Way Weyanda, neither have municipal pickup, and individual homeowners have to pay for their garbage pickup. We are seeing increasing amount, at least, we believe it. And believe me, the police are looking for it, and DPW is looking for it, to validate what we believe we're seeing, is an increase in out-of-city dumping into the city, whether it's curbside. is an increase in out-of-city dumping into the city, whether it's curbside or at one of our public dumpsters that are supposed to be for the business community and the residents in the downtown area. So I forwarded to Jacob some sample resolutions from our legislation from a community in Michigan, which seemed pretty straightforward, and we're going to ask that you consider that within the, at the next meeting. If I haven't already sent it to you, we'll send it to you this week, and I'll give you a couple of weeks to look at it. And the last issue was the enforcement of placement of signs on poles. John touched on yard sales and, and the need for yard sale permits. On those permits, and I'm sure last year you probably got some calls, that it is explicitly said in those, or laid out in those permits, that you cannot post your yard sale signs, I believe, John, am I correct?
Yes.
On telephone poles or on public areas, and if you do, you will lose your deposit. And we did take a lot of deposits last year, which were, I believe, were fifty dollars from people who were very angry. Maybe they made sixty dollars or thirty dollars or forty dollars at the yard sale, but they end up losing their fifty dollars, so they spent the whole day sitting there, selling their goods, and end up losing money. So we will take your deposit, and I'll tell you why. Because it, after the day, it ends up on the road. It rains, it falls, it's ugly, it's, it's litter, and it's a whole host of bad things. We have started already, and it doesn't only pertain to yard sales. You cannot post on, in public areas, and we're getting it some, from some school activities, from some church groups, businesses, advertising businesses, you cannot post in a public area your signs, advertising your business or your event or anything of that nature. So when that's considered littering, the police will handle those. When it's a yard sale, we take your deposit. We're going to be issuing a press release hopefully tomorrow. Hopefully, the newspaper and the media will cover it, warning people not to do it. We do get some outside-the-city people posting, and, and it just looks horrible when a telephone pole, every telephone pole in a corner is full up with these different kinds of signs, and, and also eventually, as I said, they end up in the gutter. So we're just advising people once again that this is going to happen. I'm sure Sue Dupew would like to hear this, right, Sue? And so we're, we're starting our enforcement again, and please just, you know, you're, you're forewarned, so, and, and listen to the regulations on the yard sale permits. Any questions?
Any question for the mayor?
On the sign thing also, is retrieve your signs after you put them out, come and get them after your yard sale is done also.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and they can put them on neighbors' lawns.
Is that part of the violation, or?
No, well, you know, we don't actually go around like the ones they put in the, in the curb, we're, we're not out looking for all this, but if we find them, you know, if you're smart enough to, you know, if you violate the ordinance and you put it out in the public right of way, we usually take them. If you put them on poles, we usually take your yards, your, your permit, but, I mean, your, your deposit. But people don't pick them up, and, and they end up in the road, and they end up on the sidewalk, and, and it's really unacceptable for us. We're, we're not going around cleaning up people's advertisements, basically, but if you put them on somebody else's lawn, you know, that's okay. You can do it, you can put on, it's like we put political signs on lawns, and when we run for office, any political sign we put in a public thoroughfare or right of way is picked up by the city also. So the same rules apply to us as politicians apply to the public regarding their events. So if you put them on somebody else's lawn, you're responsible for picking it up too, as a courtesy for putting it on their lawn. I would think they would want you to pick up the sign. Doesn't seem like a big, big thing, but ride down a section of Newburgh like I was yesterday morning, and believe me, it's a big thing. Really is, it's, it's, the, the amount of trash on the corner, on the street corners due to these signs is unbelievable. Any questions?
Any question for the mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports of Alderman. Aldman Massey?
Thank you. I, I have three items, two of them very positive, one of them unfortunately is disappointing and someone on the negative side. I'll start with the positive one. Sue, thank you very much for being the driving force behind Pride Day. We had a good time out there. I know Don, Jacob and I and Miguel did a little foursome and picked up quite a few things, and it was nice to see so many people involved. The second positive item, I think it was last Friday, Kevin Samorelli retired from the Middletown Police Department, and I thought what they did was really nice at four o'clock when his shift ended, in front of police station, all the officers, detectives, lined up down the front steps with the chief and the mayor at the bottom, and Kevin walked down. When he came out, they saluted and everything, and it was just, it was moving, it was nice. You could see he was choked up, his family, and I thought the police department did a tremendous job, and I also want to thank the fire department. They sent up two apparatus to block off the traffic, so no one would, would enter it. The third item is a little disappointing, and I'm going to preface it by saying that I am not anti-union, in fact, I'm pro-union. I was a member of the CICA union a number of years ago when I worked for the county, and I was a member of the teachers' union when I taught high school. But I'm disappointed by what I believe to be true, what I understand is true, and what is my absolute opinion. Tonight, there's going to be a resolution that we're going to vote on, and I want to tell you the genesis of it. There's a, a young lady, a union person who was in need of some time because there was a family emergency. The mayor, I believe, and Don Paris, the treasurer, came up with a program in which non-union people could donate time to the, to any employee, didn't have to be a union person, could, it could have been also another non-union person, but there were some strict criteria, and, and you'll read about it, but it's, I believe, one was that they were, the affected individual was completely out of time, be it sick, vacation, personal, any of that, and there was a true emergency. If someone, a non-union employee was willing to donate the time, they would submit a letter to the mayor. The mayor would look at it, obviously, and approve it, assuming they met the criteria, and then this way, the employee would not lose any pay during this time of tragedy. A meeting, or I'm not even going to say a meeting, I, I guess, well, I guess it was a meeting, an informative meeting to inform the union as a courtesy. The mayor and Don Paris were to attend. Unfortunately, the mayor could not attend due to a hearing that he was conducting. So Don Paris did attend, and along with the union people who were Glenn Arnold, Andrew Pingotti, Roberta Keys, and Esther Roman. And no one was looking to have a program instead of their program of a sick bank, which at the time, by the way, had, from my understanding, zero hours in it. We saw the need, they stepped up, and I guess when Don explained it to them, they decided to converse amongst themselves and came back and flatly refused and said no. And they, from what I understand, they did offer, said, why don't, how about the city advance the time to the individual, and they can make it up when they come back to work. Unfortunately, that's illegal. We can't do that. I am just flabbergasted, totally amazed. This is a program that will benefit the union member, along with some non-union members, because we can do it amongst our, amongst themselves. There is no downside, it's nothing but a positive, and yet, this was the stance that they took. I have, I don't know if everyone knows about it, I wanted them to know about it, and that's why I'm explaining it to you, and there will be a, you'll see on the second page as a resolution to adopt this policy, and I, and I certainly encourage everyone to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Alman Burr?
Yeah, I also like to thank Officer Samorelli for twenty years of service. Officer Samorelli, I met him about eighteen years ago when him and the chief were doing community policing in the city. Both are great guys, and Officer Samorelli, I wish you the best. Sue, great, great job again, great for the city. Lot of youth out there, I've seen the kids as eight, ten years old out there picking papers, just a great day. And finally, Jacob, cleanup week was great in the first ward, went all smooth, no calls. Thank you.
Aldman, Sue?
Ditto on the pride and cleanup, and I don't, I don't want to keep beating a ten horse. I, I do want to make a little business announcement. Looks like this third ward meeting for May has a scheduling facility conflict with, I believe it's union, right, John?
Grievance Day.
Grievance Day, Grievance Day, sorry. So we will not be able to use either the council chambers or the caucus room, given that there is a fifth Tuesday, but it falls the day after Memorial Day. We're opting to just cancel the meeting for May. We'll see you in June. If you have any need of anything, you can contact myself or Paul, there, there's no issue there, we'll come out and see you. I wanted to let everyone know that the Middletown Fire Department is also hosting their annual flower and plant sale for Mother's Day, so you can kill two birds with one stone, you can support your fire department, your volunteers, and take care of mom. So it's all this weekend, it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, right, Chief? I'm pretty sure that's correct. You don't know? Chief Winter? Okay. I'm pretty sure it's Friday evening, Saturday most of the day, and most, I think it ends early afternoon Sunday, so you can even get it on Mother's Day. So if it's last minute, you don't know what to do, go pick up a plant from the fire department. And happy Mother's Day to all the moms this week. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Alman Johnson?
Well, I will join my colleagues in thanking Sue for making our portion of the world a better place, so thank you for that. As the council knows, we met earlier this evening in the Economic Development Committee. We heard a proposal from Energy Improvement Corporation. This is neither mandatory nor urgent, so I would like you to communicate with me in some manner as to how you want to proceed, whether to have another committee meeting, answer more questions, re-explain it, kick the tires. As soon as you let me know how you want to proceed, I'll schedule a meeting if that's appropriate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alman Witt?
Thank you. Just to first let everybody know that our ward meeting is next Monday night, May ninth, from seven to eight, right here. We hope to see you. And I'd also like to thank Sue on a great job. It was so nice to see so many people here, and it really was like the perfect timing. I think President Rodriguez was the person who recommended backing it up a month, and that was a, a great call as far as getting the kids involved, because the schedules now for everybody are just insane. So thank you to all the businesses who contributed, that was awesome, and John, thank you for putting that up on, and, on the website, because I don't think people do that and make those donations to get recognized, but I think it's nice that we do it anyway. So thank you very much.
Alman Kleiner?
Thank you. Thank you, Sue, for going down the list. I was going to enumerate all the people who donated, because I think it's important that they get the recognition when they step up. It was a great community event, and, and a lot of that depends on finding a date when people can come when there aren't conflicts, and the outreach Kevin helped with the school, and Chris Brinkerhoff certainly reached out to so many of the youth groups, and, and John, of course, helps us publicize everything, but particularly Kelly Acasio, who's, you know, our new head of Middletown Cares, and she came up with and said, well, Middletown Cares can do T-shirts, because you get your logo on the back and you get the message out, and that's the point of it, about an alcohol-free and drug-free community for our youth, and seeing so many young people and so many people in Middletown just put those shirts on that say Middletown Pride. It was really a great day, so I too thank everyone involved. Next Tuesday at seven PM, we'll be having our Neighborhood Watch meeting, and we're going to have Chief Bethencourt and Bureau Commander Lieutenant Nuansu will both be at the Neighborhood Watch meeting. Alderwoman Ramkassun will get that up on Facebook and get the message out, and, and we'd like people to come out and talk about your concerns about your neighborhood, and, and you know, if you have some good suggestions, bring those too. We're open to everything, but it would be nice to get a lot of people in the room to talk about what you think about safety in Middletown. I also went to Dr. Young's inauguration, Dr. Christine Young at SUNY Orange, and of course, it's always going to be Ock to me, but, and, and welcomed her. I, I listened to the presentations when they were listening to candidates there, all three were very good, and she was terrific, and I've invited her from the start to please contact us and come here and introduce herself to the city and, and to us at the council, because I, my push has always been to keep the community and community college. It was this community that stepped up and founded one, the first community college in New York, and one of the first in the nation, and Dr. Young, I even forgive you for being a Phillies fan. Thank you.
Alman, Jean Francois?
Thank you. Sue, once again, great job. The only thing I really have to say about why cleanup, as Cindy and I going around cleaning up, I noticed we picked up a lot of recyclable item. I just want to remind everyone in the city, we still have to recycle. And please encourage your friend, everybody, we still have to recycle. There was a lot of recyclable item we picked up and away. Hopefully, next year, we could have different color garbage bags, green for recycle and black for garbage. I think that would help also, that's one idea. And also, what I want to touch on is our full-ward meeting. The reason we switched the meeting to quarterly from Monday to Saturday is because Cindy and I, we constantly getting emails and phone call from constituents that works in the city, they can't make it to our meeting on Monday. So Cindy and I had discussions, said we, we have to do something to reach everybody. So why don't we just switch the meeting to quarterly till Saturday? For the people that works in the city that usually gets home by seven o'clock in the evening, usually that's when our meeting starts, they can't make it to our meeting. So the last meeting we had on, two weeks ago on Saturday, we had four, five people that came in, and usually, those are the same amount of people that we usually get on Monday. Now, we're going to try, this is something different, we're trying to, try to reach out to everybody, so now we got to try that for a little while, we'll see how that works. Maybe we might have to do it in a day where we could have those five people that comes doing the, on Mondays, and five people that comes Saturday, put everybody together to see what we're doing. So it's, it's not, we're not doing that to punish everybody. We welcome everyone to come and talk to us at our meetings. That was the reason behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alman Summers?
Sue, thank you for pride cleanup. It was a wonderful day. That's all.
New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Ramkassun to authorize Aldman Massey to attend the NICOM conference in Saratoga, New York, Sunday, May first through Tuesday, May third, and this is a privately budgeted item.
Resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Ramkassun, seconded by? Alman Kleiner? Discussion? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize the mayor to sign a proposal for provision of professional services between the city and the Hudson Valley Patterns for Progress.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Massey. Any discussion? Alman Kleiner?
Can we change that to Hudson Valley Pattern for Progress? It's somehow that S always creeps back in, but the name is Pattern for Progress.
I'll change it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Old Woman Ram Cassoon to authorize Sergeants Castle, Tobin, and Franc to attend effectively dealing with civil disorders, riots, protests, and demonstrations course to be held East Brunswick, New Jersey on May 31st, 2016, through Wednesday, June 1st, and this is a properly budgeted item.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois to authorize, with the recommendation of the Commissioner of Public Works, a bond reductions for the High Rose Ridge project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Summers. Discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize the closing of streets on Saturday, May 21st, for the Middletown Elks Angelmin's Day Walk, starting at 10:00 AM.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Alderman Kleiner?
We did discuss this because we end up in, particularly in the second ward around the Elks Club in the Y, we do end up closing a lot of streets on a lot of weekends, and it does inconvenience people. It is for a good cause, and we'll hope that they moved it back to 10:00 AM instead of 9:00, so it wouldn't interfere with services at the temple, but, you know, we are aware, and if it becomes too great a burden on people, we'll see if the walks can't be done on the sidewalk, or there's some other way we can do it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer $15,320 from the general fund to cover costs of the transfer station cover structure.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Ram Cassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt to authorize the closing of streets on Sunday, June 5th, for the 36th Annual Classic 10K Road Race, beginning at 7:00 AM.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Old Woman Summers to concur with the mayor's reappointment of John C. Namchek as city clerk, registrar, and clerk of the common council, term to expire on May 31st, 2019.
Motion by Alderman Summers, seconded by?
An unanimous.
An unanimous second.
Yes.
Roll. Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
Job well done.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the establishment of a non-union voluntary sick time donation policy.
Resolution by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson for approving the issuance of a negative declaration for SECR, approving the execution of delivery of a certain tri-party sewer and water agreements, an intermunicipal agreement, and a stipulation of settlement related to the existing annexation of the psychiatric center property in the city and in the town of Walk Hill.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ram Cassoon. Discussion? Alderman Kleiner?
Of course, I'm strongly in favor of the annexation. It's been a long time coming, and I do support it, but, because this is for the negative declaration, you know, again, I just want to mention that the short assessment form, it says there's not a, well, it says there's not a state-regulated wetland. We know there's a lot of wetland area. I haven't seen the map recently. It does adjoin a site with remediation. It's the old landfill at the state hospital, so it is adjoining. We checked no on that form, and I don't know whether it includes the two cemeteries, too.